Let's go ahead and get started. If everybody could please stand and we'll do the prayer and then the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Heavenly Father, as always, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this time together. We thank you for your love, your grace, your mercy, and all that you provide us here in Talbot County and throughout Maryland, throughout the country and throughout the world. We thank you just for your blessings. We thank you for this warmer weather. We just are appreciative that you're with us day in and day out and we thank you for everything and all that you do. In Jesus' most precious and holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate everybody coming tonight. Let's go ahead and get started on the agenda here. The agenda is before us. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda tonight? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. All right, next is the minutes. Council's had the minutes of December the 10th, I'm sorry, and we've had a chance to take a look at it. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes, counsel? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, next would be the dispersment of January 21st and January 28th. You guys had, council's had a chance to take a look at it. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay. Okay, tonight's agenda, first up is a proclamation on human trafficking, month of January. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read the proclamation, please?
Proclamation, National Human Trafficking Awareness Month, January 2025. Whereas every year nearly 25 million children, women, and men are trafficked and deprived of their freedom, human rights, and dignity. And according to the University of Maryland School of Social Work, there have been over 1,000 reports of child sex trafficking screened by the Maryland Department of Social Services, Child Protective Services, screening units since 2013. And whereas, human trafficking is a serious problem on the eastern shore, whereby traffickers use violence, threats, deception, and other manipulative tactics to force and coerce both young people and adults to engage in commercial sex acts or to provide labor or services against their will. And whereas, human trafficking is among the fastest-growing criminal industries in the world, second only to drug trafficking. And the state of Maryland has enacted comprehensive anti-human trafficking laws with a focus on criminal prosecution and victim support. And whereas, Talbot County recognizes the considerable moral and economic harm of human trafficking to our communities, our states, and the nation, and that by working to bring a greater awareness to human trafficking within the mid-shore region of Maryland, we bring the victims' hope of securing the natural-born freedoms all human beings should enjoy. And whereas, Talbot County recognizes that increased public awareness and education within our organizations will provide more opportunities to recognize and aid in the fight against human trafficking. Now therefore, we, the county council of Talbot County, do hereby declare the month of January Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Talbot County and urge all citizens to actively work toward the eradication of human trafficking, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 28th day of January in the year of our Lord 2025.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to go ahead and approve the proclamation. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay, I think Katie and Lauren, come on up. Welcome, guys. How are you?
Good. Good, how are you?
Thank you all so much for recognizing this. This is a really important issue. My name is Katie and I'm Vice President of Marketing and Communications at For All Seasons. And for anyone who doesn't know, For All Seasons is your community behavioral health and rape crisis center. And we offer therapy, psychiatry, victim and crisis support, and education and outreach to the community regardless of one's ability to pay and regardless of one's language. And we have seven offices across the mid-shore. We also have services through telehealth and we serve the entire state of Maryland. We're very proud to be serving Talbot County. We have a very important human trafficking prevention program that is led by our regional navigator, Susan Alstrom. And we really encourage everyone to learn more about the program by visiting our website at forallseasonsinck.org. We were designated as the regional navigator for the mid-shore by the governor's office. So what we really do is connect survivors and their families to all the important services that they need to help them in their time of need, and then we provide a lot of those services to them. Human trafficking is a really serious issue. It's considered modern-day slavery, where individuals are exploited for labor or commercial sex through force, fraud, or threats. And something that's very important to note is that anyone under the age of 18 who exchanges sex for something of value is considered a trafficking victim regardless of whether there's any threats or coercion. So an easy way to remember that is that a child cannot legally consent to commercial sex. We know that human trafficking knows no boundaries and that it affects people of all different backgrounds, races, genders. We have seen several cases come through our doors, and it comes from Talbot County, it comes from neighboring counties. So we really aim to be the connector, to get those people the help that they need, and to help build awareness out in the community so that people can start looking for the signs and indicators and reporting those things. So I know Lauren has something to share on the case of reporting and how people will learn more about that.
Thank you again for having us. You know, my way over here, we're just a few blocks away. We're so proud to be headquartered here in Talbot County. I was thinking about Katie and I sitting not unlike tonight in front of you all last year this time, and us really sharing the message that it is happening and it's happening here that continues to be the case. Katie pointed out that there's a complexity to human trafficking, that it doesn't really know county boundaries. And one of the things that we're really proud to be able to say is, as the state-designated regional navigator for the five mid-shore counties, when there is a multi-jurisdictional component to this crime, and it very much is a crime that's happening here, having an agency like ours that is able to cross those jurisdictions with a little bit more facility than some of our government agencies, it really helps you all with your constituents, right? When we can kind of cross bounds and don't have quite the same burden of proof that maybe our law enforcement partners have, so we're able to provide a backbone of communication and coordination of care. Something that we didn't talk to you about last year and has really been a core part of our message over the last year has been the fact that why do regional navigators like For All Seasons exist within the state of Maryland? Part of it is because there was a law that was passed that mandates that any mandated reporter, so that's any profession that deals with children regularly as a part of their profession, must report suspected cases of human trafficking to a regional navigator like us or to DSS and law enforcement, and then they report to us. So one of the things we really dug in on this last year has been educating our partners that are mandated reporters about that duty, but also about the subtleties of how human trafficking shows up. One of the things that took effect this October was an expansion of the definition of human trafficking to include labor trafficking, which also is relevant to our kind of agriculture and our kind of aquaculture here in Talbot County. And so that's something that we're really trying to build out and be receptive to and share that message out. So with all of that in mind, in September, I want to say, we released a three-hour course that's available to anyone for free online. It's for specifically mandated reporters. We have these and we can leave them. But it really goes through in a comprehensive way, what are the laws pertaining to human trafficking in the state of Maryland? What are the signs, the indicators, behavioral and otherwise, that can help you hone in on, huh, my gut says something's happening here, maybe this is human trafficking? What is, who is a mandated reporter? What are their duties to report to law enforcement, DSS, in the case that child involved? And also For All Seasons within this jurisdiction? And then, when you take it, you get a nice little badge that you can put on LinkedIn or your email signature or whatnot to share that, hey, you are informed about human trafficking. Since we've launched that, and I want to say it was the end of October, or the end of September, early October, we've had over 120 people enroll in that course and had some really great feedback. So we just encourage anyone that's a mandated reporter or that is working alongside mandated reporters to know that that's a resource that's available.
That's great.
And we'll leave some of these cards behind.
Good. That's great. So, because of the viewers watching, and if there's people watching and a little bit nervous on how to get ahold of you guys, can you tell us how to get ahold of you guys?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Sure. So our main phone number is 410-822-1018. And we also have hotlines, and there are a lot of numbers, so.
Okay.
But I will just say, if you call that main number, you will reach For All Seasons day or night.
Okay, that'd be great. And do you have a website or no?
ForAllSeasonsInc.org. So if you just Google For All Seasons, we're going to come up.
That's great.
And you will find information on the homepage about the human trafficking program and all the resources that we've got on that page are very helpful.
That's great. That's great. Okay, counsel?
I just have one question. First and foremost, thank you for coming in tonight to, you know, make the community aware that human trafficking does exist in Talbot County, for one. But number two, do you see that the numbers are declining at all for human trafficking here in Talbot County, or are they increasing?
I would say it's a little bit of a double-edged sword. A year ago, we sat in front of you and said, when we look at our rape crisis center data, a good fifth of what was coming in was having at least one indicator of human trafficking because we screen everyone that comes in through our rape crisis center. That persists, but we're heartened because I think that that shift has really been affected by, how many people are saying, oh, I know about human trafficking, I know the signs, and so we're getting a lot more referrals. So while we're naturally, so I would say the folks that are self-referring, we're seeing a decline, but we're seeing a real rapid incline in folks coming to us and saying, hey, I know more, and now I've seen something, and I'm hoping that you can help connect the dots. Thank you.
That's great. Great.
Thanks for all you're doing. It's a very important issue these days.
Yeah.
It's a pleasure to do this again. So thank you all for bringing the awareness and thanks for being here again.
Thank you.
Thank you and the full team at For All Seasons for raising this awareness. We know that even one victim is too many and appreciate all that you do, both on prevention but also to envelop and care those who have been victims.
Yeah, so we got something for your proclamation. If you can come on up, that'd be great.
Are you ready? One, two, three. Very good.
Okay. Okay, thanks a lot. Appreciate you. Okay, yeah. Yep, yeah. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. Next on the agenda, it is introduction of a number resolution. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that, please?
Resolution to formally decline to accept the offer of dedication for the Paper Street portion of Rude Avenue as shown on a subdivision plat entitled map showing Harrisonia property of S.T. and George J. Harrison, Tillman, Talbot County, Maryland, dated November 1927, and recorded among the land records of Talbot County, Maryland at Libor CBL 212, Folio 394, and to authorize the execution of a quick claim deed to convey a 6,000-square-foot portion of such Paper Street adjacent to 5419 Rude Avenue, Tillman, Maryland, being all that portion of Rude Avenue between parcel one and parcel nine of Talbot County Tax Map 44, to the owners of such property, Jorge A. Ramirez and Christina E. Rilk, for no monetary consideration.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Thomas, you want to give us kind of an overview so people understand what we're trying to do here?
Yes. So the county was contacted by Brendan Mulaney on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Ramirez. They own two lots that are bisected by a portion of Rude Avenue, south of Eastern Avenue and Willie Road. Though this is platted on a plat from 1927, it's only partially established and has never been accepted by the county as a public road. The county does, it's not in the inventory, the county doesn't maintain it. So they are asking that the county formally reject the offer of dedication by virtue of the plat and execute a quick claim deed for that portion of the roadway. So it doesn't affect any, it doesn't affect Eastern Avenue or any properties.
I see.
North of that, it's only the southern portion that their properties are bisected by.
Okay.
And I believe Mr. Mulaney is here and may be able to provide a little bit more information if you'd like him to do so.
Good evening.
Brendan Mulaney with McAllister, Ditar Show, Walter and Walker. I represent the property owners, George and Christina Ramirez. They own both of these lots. The waterfront lot is improved with the single-family residence and the other one is vacant. What they want to do, they came to the county and said, we'd like to put a swimming pool and a, some solar panels on the vacant lot that we own to serve our residents. They don't want to build a second house or keep the lot as a second buildable lot. In order to do that, we have to consolidate the properties because, as I'm sure you all know, you can't have accessory structures on a lot without a principal dwelling under the county code. So this would allow, if the county, if the council approves this, this would allow the lots to be consolidated, would bring the properties further into conformance with critical area law and the county regulations, and would allow the property owners to make reasonable use of the, what now vacant lot.
I got you. Okay, well, good. Okay.
Yes, sir. Can you tell us, we have the old plat as part of the document, which are the lots that belong to the applicants?
One and nine, they're the lots farthest to the, it's really the south, but the left, I believe, on that plat. So there's a short stub of Rude Avenue.
Yes.
That runs between those two lots.
Yeah.
And that's the area that we're asking the council to reject.
And they own all of those lots, south of that Eastern Avenue?
Correct, that's right.
So there aren't any lots that would be getting cut off by the lots of this particular street?
There aren't any lots that utilize, that platted right-of-way there between my clients' lots either.
And does, would this move necessarily remove lot lines or something like that? Or they, those remain intact?
It would allow them to consolidate through the county's plat process, consolidate the lots into one lot. So it would be one large lot of record.
All of those lots?
Correct.
On that side of Rude Avenue?
That they currently have. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, counsel? Okay. So at this time, be a raise of hands for introduction.
Introduced by counsel?
This will be known as Resolution 369, and the public hearing will be on Tuesday, February 25th at 5:30 PM.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda is introduction of legislation. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that into the record, please?
A bill to authorize Talbot County, Maryland, the county, to borrow not more than $26,900,000 in order to finance and refinance the acquisition, renovation, and/or construction of improvements to and expansion of the Chapel District Elementary School, and to effect such borrowing by the issuance and sale of one or more series of its general obligation bonds payable from ad valorem taxes to be levied by the county, exempting the bonds from the provisions of Sections 19-205 and 19-206 of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, authorizing the consolidation of separate series of bonds into one or more bonds, authorizing the refunding of such bonds, and relating generally to the issuance and sale of such bonds for such purposes.
Okay. Welcome.
Good evening, counsel. Martha Sparks, Finance Director for Talbot County. Just to give you and the public a little background on this, in our FY '25 budget session and bill, budget year, in Bill 1574, the council approved additional funding of $26.9 million in, for the Chapel District project that we have, and that the funding source identified in that capital-enabling legislation was long-term borrowing, and that's what this legislation seeks to give us approval to move forward with.
That's great. That's great. Any questions, counsel?
Yeah. The language in here, of course, is to borrow up to that amount. That is the maximum amount if we want to finance the full capital amount here.
Actually, no. We, in the prior year, in Bill, I think it was 1538, in the FY '24 budget, we, council approved $900,000 in local funds to start the project, and that was for, I believe, things like engineering, design, that sort of thing. It did carry over into the beginning of some of the construction, but we started paying September, I think it was, we have spent those $900,000 in funds, and right now, we're prepaying until we can get the bond money when we go out to the bond market.
And I know you've been very sharp about engaging financial advice on...
When to go out to bond market?
When to go to bond, how much to go to bond for, and looking at what should be the balance of local funds, county reserve funds versus funded borrowing here. Is this what, the advice that you have for what we should be borrowing?
Well, we move forward during the budget process, when we approve, the council approved that long-term borrowing for school, the school expansion and renovation. And we have a strategy historically in Talbot County, from what I've seen, generally for school projects, we go out to bond for those. Now, with the Easton Elementary, we did put down a significant investment in that. So we've done something similar, not quite as large an amount, but also Chapel project is not costing us as much as the Easton Elementary project did. So we've done a balance of that in this project already. So we don't have any, we have plans for that $26.9 million to go towards the remainder of the project. You know, we could have, you know, additional, it's because the interest rate market doesn't look like it's gonna be coming down anytime soon. So that will not be to our advantage, but the other advantage that we have is we also may receive a bond premium, which is we receive more for our bond than we plan, than the face value. And that's, you know, I've talked to our financial advisors about that. That's putting the cart before the horse. We'll worry about that when we get there. But, so we do have, I am in contact with Davenport. It was our financial advisors, they provided me with the schedule. So we're also in contact with our bond council and all of this. But as far as the balance between local funding, we've already set that in place with this bill and with the previous bill, and it is consistent with past practice in Talbot County.
And the impact fees that we collect for education? Whenever anybody buys, builds a residential structure, they pay a portion of their impact fee for education. That is, that impact fee gets largely educated, allocated toward the interest payments on these, on these bonds or some small percentage of those interest payments?
Yes, we can, we can use the development impact fee funds for debt payments on schools.
Right. Although I know it's not more than a small fraction of that obligation.
It's not small. Actually, I think education is one of the larger ones.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Counsel? Okay.
No. He asked the question and I was gonna add.
Yeah, okay. All right, good. So, all right, at this time, show of hands for introduction.
Introduced by counsel?
Okay. Thank you. Good job, Martha.
This will be known as Bill Number 1583, and the public hearing will be on Tuesday, February 25th at 5:30 PM.
Okay, great. Okay. Next is an update on Leeds Creek Bridge Project. Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir. Counsel?
Yeah.
Ray Clark, county engineer.
I'm Murtaugh.
I'm here with Mike Murtaugh, assistant county engineer. I guess, real quick, we'll just give you a brief past project summary. We did have a public meeting back in August, on August 7th, 2024. Since that time, we've been working to meet with Bridge, York Bridge Concepts, which is the firm that the citizens out in Tunis Mills contacted and were consulting with. We then scheduled meetings with York Bridge Concepts, and then ultimately, we then scheduled a meeting with York Bridge engineer to meet with our engineer to discuss really the pilings. And I think the big issue we're running into is that with state highway, utilizing federal funding, the county's gonna have, there is a requirement within the specifications that you're not allowed to use a spliced timber pile, and that's been kind of the issue we've been going around and around, is that because we're not allowed to use a spliced timber pile, we're not able, you know, and again, this is a requirement from S.H.A., we're not able to utilize the federal aid. So we presented that information to the citizens in a meeting last week, I believe it was. So we, ultimately, are having to go with a timber, I'm sorry, with a steel and concrete pile, that we would then put a concrete cap on and then ultimately a timber deck with the timber surface is what we're proposing. We can show you some pictures on that. The other thing I would just note, too, is that we are currently in our second year of inspections. The Tunis Mills Bridge is actually having to be inspected on an annual basis. It is structurally deficient, and so we, that was, that inspection was done back in December, and we're anticipating the report from that inspection hopefully soon, so hopefully within the next couple of weeks. That being said, I think we have some information. I also was advised we have a video to show you.
Yeah.
You all want to, you want us to show the video first?
Yes.
That might not be on, right?
Okay. Look at these boards. All falling apart. Need to replace, look at this here. Placing this, which you get, you get a wooden bridge, replace these boards constantly. We have that, and then...
Ray, could you kind of walk us through what we're looking at? Some people might not understand what we're working, are you filming this?
We were not. We did not. We received this. What you're looking at is actually the timber deck.
Okay.
That the bridge, ultimately, you have a, let's say, a timber deck for the bridge.
Right.
That timber deck is actually the surface, the travel surface.
Yeah.
Usually, and then you have beams are underneath that.
Correct.
And what happens typically, when you're nailing those boards in, because you've nailed so many boards in over time, the wood underneath it's getting damaged, so you're not able to really get a good fit of a nail or whatnot. And I think there has been made many issues, I think, with the boards popping up. You know, the nails will pop up on you as well, and there's been a lot of problems with that. At the same time, the wood that we're securing is not the best wood. You know, let's say it's not a hardwood per se, it's more of a softer wood, which ultimately degrades. it's not a hardwood per se, it's more of a softer wood, which ultimately degrades quicker.
Okay.
That being said, we did meet with York Bridge Concepts, and one of the things we tried to show here is this is actually a, let's say, a kind of a laminated deck with a wood railing. The surface here is pretty much, let's say, you know, can be, we think it's a timber surface, it's hard to tell, but it can be a timber and/or a wood or an asphalt surface, depending upon what we want to do. I think that, to, I guess, work with the citizens, what we've been proposing to do is actually a timber wearing surface, using a hardwood that'll actually last longer than what we typically are seeing with the current Tunis Mills Bridge. That being said, one thing we we talked, as we talked with York, this here is basically concrete piles on a concrete cap. More than likely, what was gonna happen with our proposed bridge design is that concrete cap will probably be tucked back in under the bridge a little more, so you won't see it as much. And we can use a stamping of that concrete to make it look a little like wood, as well as we can use a covering, you know, we can color the concrete. The other thing that we note, I would note here, is this is actually gonna be a steel pile with basically concrete, reinforced concrete poured into that steel pile. So what's gonna end up happening over time is you're gonna get that steel pile now to corrode. You can also paint that, but then it could be a, you know, maintenance headache, having to paint that pile, you know, over and over and over again. So what we're anticipating here is that you you probably won't, you you, with our bridge, you probably won't see this that much. It is gonna have more spans than are shown here. So the the key is, is I think, you know, for our bridge, it's a little longer, and we're gonna have a lot more spans involved, but I, you know, I don't think you're gonna, it's gonna be something that's gonna be really easy to see, unless you're...
Excuse me, when you say "our" bridge, what do you?
I'm talking Tunis Mills Bridge, I'm sorry, the Tunis Mills...
Now?
In the future.
Oh, okay, so what we're looking at is not what we're getting?
That's, well, we would get the top part, we would get the top part.
Okay. So I'm trying to understand here for everybody. We're getting the top, but we're...
Yeah, we would get this, but this would still kind of be like what they're showing here, but they used concrete piles on a concrete cap.
I see.
So we would probably have a similar strategy here, using a laminated deck with a timber deck and a timber rail.
Okay.
And then I can show you on the next slide, this here kind of shows you kind of an aerial shot of of a, kind of a similar bridge, where it's got the timber wearing surface with the timber, timber safety rails. And then ultimately, this is, we believe this bridge is also, it's a hardwood, it we don't know if they've stained this or not, so it's not recommended to stain this, but you know, this kind of looks as the wood here, it will kind of fade and tan up a little bit, and we have a photo for that as well. But this kind of gives you a good idea of what the railing might look like. So, you know, we would be utilizing a simber timber rail concept here as part of our bridge.
It also kind of shows how it hides the the piers under it.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
So in relation to the height of this thing, 'cause I remember us talking about that the it was gonna be two foot higher.
I believe it's roughly close to three feet, if I'm not mistaken.
The new one's gonna be roughly three foot higher?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then, again, this is kind of looking at it right on the bridge, and then this is the timber deck surface with the ridges. The other thing we've tried to explain to the citizens as well, with the Tunis Mills Bridge, or Leeds Creek Bridge, the boards are actually perpendicular to traffic flow. So what we've talked with with York Bridges, and they highly recommend that they're perpendicular with traffic flow. And, you know, we also explained to the citizens, too, in talking with York, you don't want to hear a clickety-clack, you know, that means you got a problem. And so the key is, is that, you know, you know, even if we went with a new timber deck, you're not going to hear any sound. That is, you know you have a problem if you're hearing a clickety-clack going over that bridge. So one of the things, I think, what we're here to advise the council of, is that the big disadvantage we have is that if we don't get the federal aid, we're probably gonna need to have to request the council for additional funding for the project, local funding, 'cause we're not gonna be able to get any federal aid for this. So this could be a three or four million dollar ask from the council to put additional appropriations into this, into the budget. I do know, in talking with the citizens last week, and we're okay with that, if the council's amenable, they would, they asked us to request that you not make a decision, that we get back together with them, and that was kind of where we're at.
Okay, okay.
So I think we we do need to make a decision pretty quick, though, I really say. We do have to work with the property owners to secure the right of way, and then move forward, hopefully, you know, to get everything finalized and out for bid for construction.
So just a, just a couple of things, so so can we review, 'cause I haven't, I haven't really, I knew this was gonna be on the agenda and everything, but the last time we talked about it, we were in a work session with the other bridge. So so the other bridge that was proposed, that's that's gone now?
We're, the bridge that we've designed is really the bridges we're proposing to do.
The the last one a year ago?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
The the, what we tried to do is break up the bridge into, let's say, five components. The first component really was the piles, which they wanted timber piles, then the cap, which is, they wanted a timber cap. We cannot go with the timber piles, and we probably cannot go with the timber, timber cap. So now, those two components, we have to go with the original design. The laminated deck was actually what we proposed all along, so that's what they want, and we proposed that all along.
I see.
The, I think that we, what we were proposing with the wearing surface was asphalt.
Right.
So at that point, we're saying, look, we'll go ahead and go with the timber, you know, we're fine with going with hardwood timber, we've incorporated that into our budget kind of concept. And then the other component was actually the height of the of the safety railing.
Right, okay.
I think we were proposing forty-two inches, we were bringing that back down to thirty-six inches, so that's basically...
Is the thirty-six compliant with with Maryland, state of Maryland?
I think with the bridge speed, it's not that fast, and and I think one of the discussions we had with the Public Works Advisory Board was that, you know, your deck has to be three feet, so, you know, you know, because it will be people walking across it, we just felt like three feet is the best, you know, would be the safest thing to do.
So so Ray, in the in the piece that you have, you're on the current proposed design with federal fund, with federal aid, we'd still be at, we'd still be at a million and a half, but that would basically be a concrete pilings, concrete cap, and everything north of that is gonna be all wood, including the surface?
All timber, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay. And and we currently have about one point seven three million dollars available on local funds.
So no asphalt, and still have the swim platform there and everything, so access to that?
That is, yeah, we don't call it swim platform, we essentially call it loading platform.
Touche, Ray.
Yeah, S H A would not approve a swim platform.
What is the difference in cost between doing the asphalt roadway versus the wood roadway?
I kind of estimated that, you know, if we did, if we have to pay for it, I'm looking at roughly, you know, if the county had to pay for the timber, it's about two hundred fifty thousand dollars is a rough estimate, so, you know...
The difference between the two?
Between the two, yeah. I mean, at this point...
Two hundred fifty more, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes, at this point, 'cause there's gonna be a little more labor involved in it, you don't, you know, it's just a little bit different, but it's...
And what is, what is the comparative life expectancies of the different?
I would say the the timber wearing surface will probably, we've been told it can be up to, what, about thirty years, if I'm not mistaken? So this is gonna be about equivalent to asphalt. I would say the the disadvantage will be the replacement. Asphalt's gonna be a lot easier to mill off and just put a new surface on, so the replacement cost will probably be more with a timber deck than, I'm sorry, timber wearing surface, 'cause you're gonna have to pull those boards off and put new boards down.
And just for the record, that first video was the existing bridge in its current condition?
Right.
That's correct.
Which sort of displays that this needs to be done sooner rather than later.
We agree.
And Ray, with the with the current proposed design with federal aid, the the federal aid is paying for a portion of the timber components, including the deck surface?
Yes, they've also agreed to pay for this analysis that we're working on with the consultants and whatnot to do this timber versus, you know, concrete and steel pile, yes, so.
Pay for the timber wearing surface.
We we, at this point, yeah, we're assuming we have to pay for the timber wearing surface, that is correct.
Yeah.
We'll do our best to try and get that in, but we're assuming we have to pay for that.
Sure, understand. In the consensus of the 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 community, is 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 this concept?
They've been focused very hard on that timber piles and timber, timber cap.
Okay.
But I would say that the components that are coming to see us are really pushing hard for the timber and timber, and we've tried to explain to them that we don't get the federal aid if we go timber piles, you know, so I think, you know, there is a major, or not a, there is a a component of the citizens out there that would like a full timber bridge.
So Ray, just one question.
Yep.
So the cost to the county to do the, and have eighty percent federal aid based on this proposal that you gave us, with the concrete piles with timber wearing surface, is one point five for the county?
That's, right now, with the total cost, let's say, of the bridge would be about six point five million dollars?
Right.
With the federal aid, the cost to the county would be one point five?
One point five, okay. With the eighty percent of federal aid? Okay, thank you.
You're looking for an approval to move ahead with this proposal tonight?
Maybe contingent upon meeting with the citizens, I, you know, okay, no.
Well, I I appreciate what you've done in in the citizen outreach. I was not at the most recent public meeting, I was at the one back in August. I I certainly heard the the public feedback there. I appreciate the the homework that you've done to investigate the alternatives as requested, and and appreciate that that we we really can't sacrifice the federal aid, that we really, the the economics of this project dictate that we absolutely need to go with the 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 recommended steel concrete pilings and 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 concrete cap. You've made a compelling case for that, and and I'll I'll move that that we move forward with this this project without further delay, and...
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'll I'll move, I'll I'll move that authorization.
You're making a motion.
I'm moving that we approve this as proposed.
Proposed like this, or proposed not like this?
As proposed, in the current proposed design with steel concrete piles with timber wearing surface and eighty percent federal aid.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
And we'll just hope that any suspension of federal grant aid for transportation projects is very short-lived, and this project can move forward as promptly as possible.
Well, that's just been blocked since we've been sitting here, so.
Judges blocked that ruling, so hopefully we're in good shape.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, guys, good job, thank you. Okay, you guys are getting a new bridge soon, within seventeen years.
I'm sorry, sorry, okay, gotcha.
Okay.
Some citizens have been part of the loop, too.
Okay, well, good, well, thanks for all your patience, I really appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda is Jeff Stuff. There you go. Mr. Stamp is is laying back in the sun, I think, somewhere, you know, I mean, good for him, good for him, yep.
We have a few board and committee appointments tonight under Board of Appeals. I'm requesting the reappointment of Jeff Adelman, Louis Dorsey, and Keith Prettyman.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
For the Emergency Services Advisory Board, I'm requesting the reappointment of Debbie Timms from Shore Regional Health, Tim Cannon representing the Cordova District, Steve Marosik from the Talbot Fire and Rescue Association, and Steve Elliott from the Sheriff's Office.
Motion to approve, request.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Great, and I'd like to bring Ray Clark up for the request to seek, submit applications for grant and loan funding through the Maryland Water Quality Infrastructure Finance Program and USDA Rural Development for several projects.
Thank you, Council. Again, we have four, four projects, I think we're looking at, or five projects, I'm sorry. One is the Region Five Waste for Treatment Plant, this would be to upgrade that treatment plant with E and R standards, which would be three milligrams per liter or less of total nitrogen and point three milligrams per liter of total phosphorus, along with doing improvements to the sewer collection system, similar to what we did in St. Michael's, as well as working with Rural Development to go ahead and upgrade our pump stations on Tillman Island. We have, I believe it's five pump stations, so we would upgrade those and standardize to kind of a one ten horsepower stump, pump station, and we're looking at doing the same thing as part of our Unionville and Tunis Mills-Cockerville pump station. So this would be, you know, something that would, you know, we'd have redundancy, we'd be able to move equipment to, you know, from one station to the next if we had a problem, so. We're looking at roughly going to about ten million dollars. I think one, we were looking at probably going, I'm thinking we probably should go for the ten million for the M D E application, and probably twelve million dollars for the Rural Development application. And then the other project we have is the Region Two Waste for Treatment Plant, pump stations one and two. We originally designed that pump stations one and two in the town of St. Michael's with a flow-serve pump. They are, that pump is no longer being served, or I guess manufactured, so we can't get parts for that. So we're seeking funding through both M D E and Rural Development to go ahead and upgrade those pumps, and then buy two spare pumps, again, going redundancy. Both those stations would be utilizing a one hundred gallon per minute pump, which is what we have today, and so if we ever needed to replace a pump, they're interchangeable. So that was the other project for about two million dollars, and then we have a two million dollar Unionville and Royal Oak pump station. That's the pump stations we were talking about, where we're looking at standardize into the ten horsepower pumps, so that if we need to do some, you know, we have to replace pumps, we have the ability to do that. At the same time, we're looking also to provide a, let's say, a hardened maintenance building, so that in the event we have a, an emergency, wet weather emergency, or any other type of emergency, we can pre-position equipment and/or we can utilize that site for contractors to stage out of. That's one of the problems we're running into, I think, throughout the county, is we don't have staging areas for contractors when there's an issue. And then the other project we have is a, the Region Two Martingham Vacuum Sewer System Improvements. This would be looking at trying to improve the vacuum system for Martingham, and again, this is about a two million dollar project, we're looking at seeking funds both through M D E and USDA. And then the other one was the Clayborne Water System. This one, I think, is unfortunately for us, is probably a project we should go to Rural Development and not really focus on on M D E at this point in time, so. So ultimately, just seeking the council's approval to move forward with the preparation of those applications and submission. The deadline for the M D E applications is Friday, so just...
Okay. All right, Council, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Motion to approve the request.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second for the request. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, and lastly, we have a request from Public Works to recommend the award of bid number twenty-four twenty-two, Talbot County, Maryland, sanitary district septic tank effluent pump system installation and connection. This is a rebid of bid number twenty-three ten. We received three bids for this project, only one of which was deemed to be responsive, and I'll turn it over to Ray.
Yes, apologize on that, I forgot about this one, but, yeah, this is the, we had to go rebid this. Schumer Incorporated, who's currently doing work within these, for Resolution two thirty-five as well as two fifty, was the only responsive bidder. I mean, we did as much as we could to try and build up as many local firms to bid on this project. We even tried to get bonding assistance for them, and it, we were surprised that we really didn't, we had eight contractors attend the pre-bid, but then we were surprised only get three bids, and unfortunately, two of the bids were non-responsive, so. This is, again, I think the key is, we're looking at awarding all of the contracts, basically, we have contract A through G, A, B, C, D, E, F, G. The total amount would be five million nine hundred thousand two hundred ninety-one dollars. This would be funded through the Bay Restoration Program for Waste for Treatment Plants, or I'm sorry, yeah, Waste for Treatment Plants. or I'm sorry, yeah, wastewater treatment plants, wastewater fund, and we would also be working to try and get the Orinco, I'm sorry, yeah, the Orinco step unit would be funded by SRF funding. So this is, again, this is to install all of the septic systems, about three hundred of them, that were included in Resolution two thirty-five.
Okay, any questions, Council?
Well, thank you for your due diligence on this, and sorry for the frustration of having to rebid this project, and, but thank you for all your efforts to try to make this project as affordable as possible for those rate pairs. With all that, I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ray. Good job, you and Mike.
Thank you, that's the end of the report.
Okay, good job, okay. All right, next on the agenda is public comment. Anybody? Yes, sir, come on up. Hey, good evening.
Thanks, Terrence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Terrence, could, would you mind, so people can hear what you're saying, could you introduce yourself, please? Thank you.
My name is Terrence Bailey, fifth generation nephew of Frederick Douglass and the president and founder of the Bailey Gross Foundation Foundation. We, I'm here to talk about the, as in the packet I just gave, our proposal to create an African-American Cultural Center and African-American Historical Society in Talbot County. This proposal that I gave you is, it talks about the event next month with Frederick Douglass's two hundred seventh birthday celebration, which we're also having the parade that's being led by the Fifty-Fourth Massachusetts, and that goes to benefit, all the events we do for the birthday celebration, pretty much everything we do that's a fundraiser, is to support the African-American Cultural Center. The building would be named after Grace Brooks in the Hill community, so it would be the Grace Brooks Building, and as detailed in the, in the blurb in the back of the proposal, the Grace Brooks Building and the Frederick Douglass Society of African-American Affairs, History, and Culture will serve as an headquarters for efforts to protect and uplift over six hundred at-risk, I'm sorry, over one hundred at-risk historically black communities across the U.S. which face threats from gentrification, immigration, through partnerships with cities connected to Frederick Douglass such as Washington, D.C., Rochester, New York, Baltimore, Maryland, Bedford, Massachusetts, will create a tourist attraction, a tourist exchange program that brings African-American history to life. The Cultural Center will own a charter bus for this purpose. The Grace Brooks Building will become an international destination for those seeking to understand African-American experience, particularly the history of the Eastern Shore of Maryland. Let's see. On the back, on the very back of the page, it says, at the Frederick Douglass Society of African-American Affairs, History, and Culture, we are dedicated to reserving, celebrating, educating others about the African-American history and culture with special focus on the historic Hill community and beyond. The, the only, when we first started this project, the goal was to purchase the Purdue property, because it was, it was a nice big piece of property, we can put the building, which the rendering is in the packet, which was done by Mark Rosado, but we wanted to put it there. That didn't, that didn't appear to work out, so the only, the only property that's left that could house the Cultural Center and the African-American Historical Society would be the Health Department property. There's no, there's no other place within the community to preserve the community, you have to be in the community. So we would like the Council to consider the African-American Cultural Center being built on that location. If not, then we're going to be pretty much forced out of our neighborhood. That's the last ditch effort to preserve the Hill, the history.
Right.
Next month, at the, at the, at the event, at the VIP dinner for Uncle Frederick's Birthday Celebration, we'll be doing a contract signing with the Chenault family who own the house across the street from the Buffalo Soldier House. They've agreed to do a long-term, a long-term lease, where we can renovate the property back to period, they can be a part of the Hill tour. So there will be, actually be a place in the Hill that you can go in the house and you guys should see how people lived in the late seventeen hundreds, early eighteen hundreds. That house was actually sold to their great-great-grandmother by a Quaker family, and it's been in their property, it's been in their, in their family ever since. We also have another property under contract in Denton on Meaton House Road, on the Chop Tank, to create a Anna Murray Douglas Visitor Center. So we're, we're kind of moving kind of fast, we're trying to get all this, all this history somewhere where this history can be housed, like this Cultural Center, real quick, would be three stories. The first story would be the Cultural Center and a museum or whatnot, the second story would be a lecture hall, community space or whatnot, to break history and have events and what, and what have you, and the third floor would be the offices. This statue here was done by Mr. Richard Blake out of Lancaster, PA. This is the statue that we, that we had a model. This would be in the atrium, in the lobby, or a variation of it. So, I mean, I personally believe that the history here should be preserved, like, the Eastern Shore has produced more African-American leaders who have shaped the destiny of this country than any other place in the country. We have more leaders from this, just from this area, and I think Talbot County should be a leader in that, in that history, and it should be the capital of that history for the Eastern Shore. And the Hill is the place to do it, because it's the oldest one, you know, then you got Tremaine, everybody else, so.
Yeah.
This, this is, this is, just like the birthday celebration for Uncle Frederick that next month, this should be a national thing, there should be no hotels available that week of this birthday celebration. Now, I think we're letting, we're dropping the ball by, by not taking advantage of it, and we need an African-American Historical Society, so.
Okay, well, we really appreciate you coming tonight and get us, making us aware of, you know, considerations, and any questions on this?
No, just, go ahead.
Yep, yep. Just, no questions, a lot to digest here, and, but thank you for all the work that you are doing in this community and for, and for the vision that you bring for, for this.
Thanks.
Exactly.
I'd just like to say, I like the concept, you have a rendering in your handout, is that what is being proposed? Because I don't see how that fits in with the neighborhood.
That rendering, that was done by Mark Rosado, that was when, that was when we were trying to, when the Purdue property was available. The goal was to keep the silos and then to have artists come in and paint the silos, you know, put artwork on the silos or what, or what have you, and to be honest, we couldn't even get a conversation with Purdue.
But you are proposing to not repurpose the Health Department, but to do a completely new building?
Completely, to my understanding, it's the property that's historic, not the building.
Okay.
Okay.
The building would have to be torn down.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
Just one comment, certainly thank you for coming in to share this with us, this is a great start, but second, my daughter was taking her nursing exam in Salisbury, and one of the gentlemen there saw that she was from Talbot County and said, are you familiar with, you know, the Hill? And she was like, yeah, a little bit, he says, well, do you know that that was the oldest free African-American, you know, community? So a lot of people that, you know, are familiar with the Hill is across the Eastern Shore, because she went to Salisbury, so I found that that was quite interesting, that he brought that up to her.
That being said, we have a lot, we have a lot of support from outside of the community for this project, like the Timbuktu Historical Society in New Jersey, they want, you know, they want to be a part of it. The family of, the family of Malcolm X supports the project, Dr. Elias Shabazz, and then you got the Harriet Tubman family who are, we were all neighbors on, in the Hill. Then you have the family of Reverend Nat Turner, they want, they want to actually partner with the county, because they actually own the farm where all that historic stuff happened in Southampton County. And then, and then there's the opportunities for tourism between Talbot and Rochester, New York, you know, we've been working on is trying to put something together where if we, if we send a bus from here to Rochester, they will host, and they will take everybody all around to all the sites and whatnot, Uncle Frederick's burial site, the property where he lived, and all his, and all the relevant stuff, and then the Auburn, and then we do the same thing here. They send, they send people here, and then we, then we put them on the Talbot County tour, and, you know, which is kind of, a little bit, a lot of Talbot and a little bit of Caroline, but, you know, I think it's a, it's a.
It's great.
It's a, it's a good thing.
What's your budget?
As far as the building, or as far as everything?
What's the cost to do the project?
The cost of doing a project right now, I don't, I don't know what it's going to cost to build that building, because there'll be things we'd have to talk about, like, I personally, I'd rather do a long-term lease agreement versus trying to buy it, because buying it, that money should go towards building the building, we can get, we can get more building if we ain't got to buy the land, if the county keeps ownership, is my personal opinion. I'd rather that money go towards state-of-the-art stuff, in the, set in the park, making it, making it that much better. So it would have to be a partnership between us and the county or whatnot to get that stuff hammered out, because, I mean, this is our first discussion.
So just a little bit of comment for the project, I would highly recommend that the first step be a feasibility study. Step one, in any type of development project like this, you want to get a feasibility study, to see if it's even, you know, feasible, and then second, work with, you know, your budget, see if there needs to be an environmental one or two done on the property, things of that nature, so, just a little bit of.
I just want, I wanted to come in first and say something before I go, before we go trying to raise fifty thousand dollars for a feasibility study, and then come in here and you say, no way, and we're nonprofit, we're out of fifty, we're out of fifty grand, so.
Well, the feasibility study, you should be able to get a grant for that, and I can certainly talk to you a little bit more about that if you want more information about that.
That's good, that's good, okay.
Good? I'm good.
Okay, all right, we really appreciate you coming in.
All right.
Okay, thank you now. Okay. All right, anybody else would like to come up here and say a few words? Okay. Yes, yes, come on up, yes.
Sarah Kilman, Communication Coordinator for the county, I apologize for not making it on the agenda today, but I did just want to let the public know that the submission portal for the Talbot Citizen and Service Awards, as well as this year's poster contest for Talbot Day is open and on our website. You can go to talbotcountymd.gov/talboday, and you'll find links to both of those portals. I will say, the poster contest theme this year is Talbot Through Time, to reflect our Talbot Two Fifty initiatives that are going around, so I would love to see posters that represent our history in Talbot County, and I'm really excited, we'll see, we'll see how it goes. Applications and entries are open until April first, so that gives everyone two months to do, to either submit someone for the Talbot Citizen and Service Awards, or do some art, create a poster, and submit that poster to our contest.
Okay, that sounds great, any questions? All right, thank you.
Sarah, can you give a little pitch about Talbot Two Fifty and just announce that opening as well?
So we also held our first interest meeting for Talbot Two Fifty last week, it was very successful, we had forty, forty-five roughly people attend, and we also had Michelle from the state level of the Maryland Two Fifty provide some additional context, which was very exciting to have her there. She lives in our county, so she was also excited to see that our commission is officially up and running and in the progress. So what I will say is that while the Talbot Two Fifty, I personally have been working on it for about a year, the commission is really the person, the people that are going to make a difference on what our celebration looks like over the next two years. And so the commission application is currently open, we're accepting applications until the end of February. At that point, we really need to get it kicked off and let's go. So if you are interested in applying, that application is also available on our website, and if you'd like more information about Talbot Two Fifty, you could go to talbottwo fifty dot org, and you'll find stories about Talbot County, about people, about places, and it's pretty exciting. I'd recommend you go check it out.
Thank you for all your work in organizing that information meeting, that was, I got in there late, but I was really impressed by what I saw, and particularly by the citizen interest in this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sarah, appreciate it. Okay, anybody else like to come up? Okay, next on the agenda would be the council comments. Mr. Step?
I'll keep it short tonight.
Okay. Okay, you're good. Mr. Lusher?
Two items. In follow-up to the complaints the county received regarding the Town of Trap and Paris Foods, the town with Paris Foods approval has submitted an application to amend the Conference of Water and Sewer Plan. The application will be considered by the county council for introduction on March eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Lindsey Ryan, attorney for the Town of Trap, is planning on attending the county council's February eleventh meeting to address the allegations set forth in the complaints and answer any questions from council regarding the same. My other item, amid the chaos spilling out of Washington, your local government here in Talbot County continues to deliver the services that our citizens count on. Roads are maintained, nine eleven calls are answered, and emergency services dispatched, libraries and parks and recreation facilities are open and clean, schools and the airport are open when snow permits, building permits are issued. In all of these ways and more, your county government continues to serve the public with quiet competence, thanks to all the staff for making that happen.
Yep.
You're here, Mr. Lusher. Joining you in that.
Yep. Okay.
Oh, my turn.
Your turn.
Okay.
I just want to remind everyone that Saturday is the first day of Black History Month, and the Waters Edge Museum in Oxford is having a celebration on Saturday, February the first, from one to three P.M. So if you haven't had an opportunity to visit that museum, which I haven't, I'll be going down there on Saturday, just to visit.
Okay, that's good. And I just have a little bit of sad news. Our family here, the Gannon family, unfortunately, one of the brothers, Glenn, passed away a few days away, a few days ago, so he's, it was, it was, I didn't know if you knew that or not.
I didn't know.
Yeah, I didn't know if you knew that or not, so I just wanted to let the public know and give a prayer out for the Gannon family, because they're a very, very big part of this community, and I did have the pleasure of seeing Glenn a few weeks ago at the, at the dinner. He was there, so, you know, we at least got to say hello to him and stuff, and, but let's say a prayer for him, and it was unexpected, so, so we'll just leave it at that. He was, he was pretty young, I mean, I think he was maybe mid-sixties, you know, something in that range, yep, so. When you see, when you see the family, just give your regards, okay?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, February eleventh, beginning at five o'clock P.M. The council will be convening an open session at three thirty P.M. and then adjourning into closed session as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene?
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay, thanks a lot, everybody.